Good afternoon. The January 15 Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Slick?
Here.
Commissioner Alvarez?
Here.
Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley?
Here.
And Commissioner, if you could turn your volume up a little bit.
Sorry, I have to lean forward. Nothing's working over here.
Very well, thank you.
I'm broke and my computer's broke, so sorry.
We just want to make sure we hear you on votes, for sure. And Commissioner Higgins. Chair Cruz? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a brief notice to read. As required by state law, Prosper Portland invites the public to access and attend this meeting in person. There is also a YouTube livestream video of the meeting, and the public has had the opportunity to arrange in advance to provide virtual testimony. The public may provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us, excuse me, prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Thank you. Okay, start with Commissioner Reports. Does anyone have anything they would like to report?
Couple of things. On the personal family front, had an opportunity to check out the Winter Ice Rink once again for my daughter's birthday, she celebrated with a friend, and my oldest son participated, and we just had a blast. So, once again, just want to thank everyone involved in that, as it was a memorable family experience, and they were asking, we went on the last day, they're like, can we go back again tomorrow? And we're like, oh, next year, we'll have to wait till next year. So, note to self, plan it a little earlier, next year. And then, on the business development front, I've had an opportunity to be part of an economic development trip out to New York, to Brooklyn, and to Detroit, with a number of other members from both public and private organizations, with the effort to learn more about a deep tech innovation program run by a company called New Lab. Really exciting trip. We learned quite a bit about their economic development program, some of which, I think, aligns with some of the broader clean tech task force recommendations, of which I was a part of. And we're looking to bring members from the New Lab team out to Portland to meet with other folks as well. So, mentioning it here, if any one in the audience would be, you know, interested in learning more about the opportunity, so wore a couple hats on that trip, obviously, both as a, on the Prosper Portland side, but on the, as a member of the startup community, but really interesting group that we look forward to continuing conversations with in the weeks and months ahead.
Any other comments? How about Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley? Do you have anything you'd like to report?
No, I don't have anything. Thanks for asking.
All right, then, we'll go to the interim executive director report with Shay Flaherty-Battin.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So, given that this is our first meeting of the new year, I have an opportunity to highlight a couple of items led by our Office of Film and Events. First is the Portland Winter Ice Rink, which is back at the Morrison Bridgehead for the second year. Thank you, Commissioner Alvarez, for attending. Based on what we learned from year one, this year's rink was 20% larger, it opened in mid-November, and it featured nightly themed programming. While the team is still working to understand the final numbers, I'm pleased to note that through the end of 2024, we had more than 21,000 visitors and more than 17,100 tickets sold for skating. Both those numbers surpassed last year's totals. We had a strong group of partners again this year, and I want to thank particularly Carolina Nascimento, Michelle Comer, and the entire team at Ice America. On the Prosper Portland side, I'd like to acknowledge the great work of Burke Nelson, Elise Taylor, Ness Zolin, Lisa Norwood, Yume Delgato, and of course, the project's fearless and creative leader, Amanda Park. The second item is the New Year's Eve event that Prosper Portland sponsored at Pioneer Courthouse Square. The event featured two drone shows, a video dance party, and a variety of food and drink options. I'm excited to note that multiple sources confirmed that the crowd at one time was more than 10,000 people, which was exactly the point, to celebrate the New Year with friends and add vibrancy into downtown Portland. Speaking of, it's been more than 20 years since there's been a New Year's Eve party in the square, and as you can imagine, an event like this relies on outstanding collaboration. So, I'd like to thank our partners at Pioneer Courthouse Square, the City of Portland, Portland's own Video Dance Attack, Open Sky Productions, who brought the drone show for the first time, local vendors Nacho, Taco Frita, Roland Fresh, and The Block, and as well as the Visitors Development Fund Board at Travel Portland, who helped us fund the event. On the Prosper Portland side, again, I'd like to acknowledge the great work of Ness Zolin, Amanda Park, Burke Nelson, Elise Taylor, Lisa Norwood, and Yume Delgato. Next, I have the great honor to introduce new staff, and to also recognize a familiar face who has rejoined the agency. First, I am honored to announce that LaShelle Harris has joined the Equity, Policy, and Communications Department as our new Senior Administrative Coordinator. LaShelle has returned to the Pacific Northwest after spending some extended time in sunny Florida, sorry about the winter, caring for her mother. LaShelle is a US Army veteran and comes to Prosper Portland with over 15 years of experience in senior-level administration, including time at the Bonneville Power Administration, the US Department of Defense, and the State of Oregon. LaShelle's post-secondary education has been a split between programs at Portland State University, studying music vocal performance, and business administration at the University of Portland. She has a 10-year-old son named William and a four-legged fur baby named Harrison, so Harrison Harris, everyone. When she is not working, LaShelle works on new recipes at home in the kitchen and making music in the studio. Welcome, LaShelle. Next, I'd like to introduce Tais Fedorov, who's joined the Prosper Portland lending team as a Senior Administrative Coordinator. Tais brings over 10 years of experience providing comprehensive administrative, operational, and financial support in dynamic environments. She moved to the United States in the late 90s with her mother from Kabarovsk, a city in far east Russia, which also happens to be a sister city of Portland. Tais has been married for 14 years, has an 11-year-old son who loves soccer and go-karting with his dad. Her family also includes a dog and a cat who's convinced he's a dog. And when she's not working, Tais is passionate about photography, horseback riding, camping, hiking, and traveling. Welcome to Prosper Portland. I'm also excited to announce that Will Fear has returned to Prosper Portland as our new real estate manager, leading a newly-formed real estate team that's focusing on asset management, leasing, teneting, and construction management activities. Some of you may recognize Will from his time at Prosper Portland as a project manager. He worked on several significant projects, including the Lentz Town Center, Airport Way, Gateway, and the River District, ranging from construction of Lentz Commons to demolition of Centennial Mills. Since his last stint at Prosper Portland, Will has built his leadership and management experience and expertise in commercial real estate transactions, finance, customer relations, and portfolio and project management. Before entering commercial real estate, Will spent over a decade in the US Air Force, including multiple Middle East deployments. And on a personal note, Will recently celebrated his 17th wedding anniversary with his wife. He has four energetic children and spends his free time outdoors with friends and family. Welcome back. So, finally, Commissioners, I hope you'll indulge me for a few more minutes to recognize one of our colleagues who has reached an amazing milestone, one that I think we believe has only been matched once in the history of this organization. Our coworker, a born and raised Portlander, Jefferson High School's very own Dana Decline, has recently passed 30 years of employment here at Prosper Portland. Throughout her time here, Dana has been a resource to her colleagues, a collaborator with our bureau and nonprofit partners, and a passionate advocate for the communities that we live in and that we serve. To underscore that last point with a couple examples, we can look to Dana's leadership in launching the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative, her role within the Cully-Tiff District work, and the subsequent East Portland Tiff Exploration Process. Her work throughout these extensive processes have led to 10 successful Tiff District approvals by City Council, and that includes the NPN, Cully, and East Portland districts. In addition, her thoughtful, community-centered engagement has helped create a blueprint for all future Tiff District Exploration work. Dana approaches her work with curiosity, dedication, lots of patience, and a very generous spirit. I'll also note that anyone who has worked with Dana knows Dana has one of the most infectious laughs, and she happily employs it throughout the day, much to our benefit. And working here for 30 years is such an impressive accomplishment, I think it got us thinking, you know, what happens over 30 years by the numbers? Over the past 30 years, Dana has worked with seven mayors, 34 commissioners of this organization, and 10 different executive directors. She has held six different positions on four different teams, she's had 11 direct managers and a desk in five different buildings. She has written and responded to tens of thousands of emails, probably more than a few faxes, and countless numbers of meetings. Fun fact, when Dana first started at the agency, there was one computer that everyone had to share to access the internet. More importantly, during this time, Dana has become a mom twice over to Charlie and Jacob, she's raised them into amazing young men, and has now welcomed a granddaughter into her world, and she will happily share pictures of little Rea, if you ask. I think there's a lesson here for all of us, and it's to strive to possess the traits that Dana embodies, and that's dedication, creativity, a passion for equity, a desire to collaborate, focus on our stakeholders, and of course, a wonderful sense of humor. Dana, we're so grateful for your commitment to our agency, to our work, to our city, but if anything in this world is true, is that change is the only constant, and all good things, even an iconic 30-year run, must come to an end. I am equal parts devastated and proud to share that Dana has just recently accepted an exciting new opportunity in government leadership not too far away. Dana will be moving on from Prosper Portland to serve as the City of Salem's new Assistant Director of All Urban Development. So, starting in February. And I am beyond confident, Dana, that you will achieve wonders for the City of Salem, because our loss is their tremendous gain. While I know this move brings you physically closer to your home and your partner, I cannot overstate the impact that your absence is going to have on us, on our team, on our culture, and our city as a whole. You have been integral to this agency's voice as we've made the journey from PDC to Prosper Portland as an advocate, and we are all better for knowing you. So, Dana, thank you what you have done for Portland, thank you for everything you've done for us.
Usually, I'm scripted here, so this is gonna just, when Robert says, we're just gonna say a couple words, don't believe him. That was incredible. Thank you so much for all of you, because I know you all put a bunch into that, to be able to get that whole, sounds impressive, doesn't it? It has been an amazing ride, and I will say, I am very, very, very proud of where we are as an agency now, and I'm extra confident that I'm leaving this incredible body of work. Very capable, committed partners in this work, so y'all, you guys are gonna rock this stuff. So, I am, it has been not always this way, and it's a really cool space to be right now, so. When I came into this agency, I was a temp, I did not know what I was, I didn't know about Portland Development Commission, and it just became my life's work, and I am forever grateful for all of the energy and commitment and opportunities I've been given. So, yeah, it was supposed to just be a 30-year, you did it, and you're stuck with me, and well, that didn't happen, so I was not actively looking, but this opportunity really, I could not pass it up, so I'm really excited about the next, but I will be around, so.
I'd say that concludes our remarks.
Wow. That was amazing. So, thank you, thanks to everybody, and congratulations to everyone, and thank you, Dana, really, it's just amazing, so. If anybody has anything else they'd like to add, but that was terrific, so. Okay, you know, it, you know, what, you know, going to meeting minutes is just not, doesn't have quite the same ring to it now, but that's what we'll do next. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes of December 18, 2024?
Motion to approve?
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from anybody? Nope? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Okay. Let's see, public comment, Pam, do we have any public comment? Okay. All right, as I mentioned earlier, the public can provide public comment to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. All right, so next, we're going to do something a little different, we're going to adjourn the Prosper Portland Board meeting and convene as the Prosper Portland Audit Committee. The meeting of, this meeting of the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners is now adjourned. The members of the Prosper Portland Board will now meet as the agency's audit committee to consider the next item on the agenda. So, this is item six, accepting and approving the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2023-24, and accepting the communication with those charged with governance. Auditor Simone Reddy is with us today, and let's see, Keith Simovic, David Levitsky, and Tony Barnes will all present as well, so. Welcome, Auditor Reddy, glad to have you, and thanks to everybody for joining us today.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Chair Cruz and Commissioners, I'm City Auditor Simone Reddy. Joining me from our outside financial audit firm, Moss Adams, our partner Keith Simovic, and manager David Levitsky. Tony Barnes is also here, Prosper Portland's Chief Financial Officer. I'm pleased to be back here to present the results of the financial audit and to answer questions that you might have about it. Presenting our work publicly allows the community to engage with our public agencies and also in the audit results. The mission of my office is to ensure open and accountable government, and city charter charges my office with auditing the performance of our city government, including Prosper Portland. Go to the next slide. My office also sees the audit of Prosper's financial statements, and today, we're going to be looking back at the last fiscal year, which ended July 30, 2024. Next slide, please. Before I get into the audit results, I just want to explain the difference between performance audits and financial audits. Performance audits are reviews of the efficiency, effectiveness, and equity of one city program or service at a time. For example, we evaluated Prosper Portland's Small Business Relief Fund in 2021, and the audit looked at emergency grants that were awarded during the early days of the pandemic, and the audit made recommendations for how to strengthen the program for the next time that disaster strikes. On the other hand, we have financial audits, which are a review of financial statements, and those follow applicable laws and accounting standards. The objective of this financial audit was to obtain a reasonable assurance about whether Prosper Portland's financial statements as a whole were free of material misstatement or generally fair and accurate. Next slide, please. I also want to highlight the different roles of management and the auditors, and what is or isn't changing as part of the city's transition to a new form of government, which is effective January 1, 2025. Prosper Portland's management prepared the financial statements and was also responsible for putting internal controls in place. In the new form of government, Prosper Portland is placed within the city's Community and Economic Development Service area. However, your role as Commissioners overseeing Prosper's financial reporting remains unchanged. Like I said, my office has charter authority to approve and select Prosper Portland's financial auditors, and this remains unchanged in the new form of government. We clarified these roles and relationships in February 2024 as part of an inaugural memorandum of understanding between our two organizations, and as a result, my office continues to oversee the financial audit as part of our citywide contract with Moss Adams. And this structure provides an additional separation between auditors and management to enhance independence and increase trust in the results. Prosper Portland's participation in the citywide contract allows us to leverage economies of scale during the procurement of financial audit services, and we also ensure coordination between the independent aspects of auditing Prosper's financial statements and the city's financial statements, as well as Prosper's federal spending that is combined with the cities as part of the federally required compliance audit, also known as the single audit. And as the board report shows, Prosper received a clean audit opinion on the financial statements, and that means that the outside firm concluded that the financial statements were a fair and accurate reflection of Prosper's finances. Can go to the last slide. The financial statements and audit are an important resource for community members, taxpayers, investors who buy the city's and Prosper Portland's debt, and of course, decision-makers like you. Interested parties can use them to see what financial shape Prosper Portland is in. I appreciate Prosper Portland's finance team for facilitating a smooth audit process over many months, the summer and fall, and answering requests from the outside auditors. I also want to thank Moss Adams for their continued excellence and professionalism in performing financial audits on our behalf. And Tenzin Gunta, the Deputy Director from my office's Audit Services team, is here to answer questions, and she can also help set up a meeting with you after today's presentation. And I will turn the presentation over to Keith and David at this time, and then Tony will have some closing remarks. Thank you for hearing from me today.
You.
Perfect, well, thank you, Auditor Reddy, and good afternoon, Chair Cruz and fellow Commissioners, happy to be back, serving as the independent auditor for Prosper Portland again for the year ended June 30, 2024. Good news overall, as you just heard, the audit is complete at this point, we finalized that actually back in the tail end of October of 2024, which is right in the normal timeframe that we set out at the beginning of this process, so very, very good news there. This is our chance to present those final results to you and go through our final deliverables and what those say. I will note that we did get a chance to meet with the audit liaisons, both Chair Cruz and Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley, right before we finalized the audit as well, and share a few more details than you'll see today, but this really summarizes those results and gives you, as a board, a chance to ask any questions that you might have in this process and our final results. Go ahead and advance the slide. I think this next one is just a snapshot of the core group of our team. Of course, you see me and David here today, Lori Tish is our Quality Control Reviewer. A role that we have that's served by someone at a very high level at our firm, Lori is a partner, just like myself, and is required to look at certain key documents in our audit file and sign off on those before we can issue our final audit opinion. It's something that our firm requires, it's not required by our auditing standards, but something we feel very strongly about, that we have that person that's not otherwise involved in any of the meetings with management, they don't present to the board, but they come in as a cold reviewer, but someone that really has a lot of experience in the government industry. Lori leads our Government Services practice for the firm and signing off on certain key work papers, so she was a key person of our team. In addition to the three that you see pictured here, we had a number of staff and seniors that were involved that David and myself oversaw during the process, as we were going through doing our detailed audit work and working with the team here and the staff at Prosper Portland to get through the audit procedures. Go ahead and advance the slide. Go ahead and advance the slide. This gives you kind of an overview of the different audit deliverables that we issue. You heard from Auditor Reddy that you did receive a clean audit opinion over our financial statement audit report. You see that attached to what's called your ACFER, your Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And that, at the end of the day, is the goal, is that you get that clean opinion where we're saying, through all the detailed work that we're doing, we've gathered enough evidence, followed our professional standards, to say that we believe this is a fair and accurate representation of Prosper Portland's financial situation as of June 30, 2024. So that involves all the detailed testing, tracing your records and what's been recorded and captured by the staff here and the general ledger, back to substantive documentation, whether that's invoices, contracts, agreements, cash disbursements, cash receipts, making sure what you've presented in your financial statements or your ACFER is consistent with those underlying supporting items and that you've followed all the governmental accounting standards as well. So very good news there. That's exactly what you're looking for, is that clean, unmodified audit opinion. Any third party that gets a hold of your financial statements, they want to know, did you get an audit done? Was it done by an independent third-party firm that's qualified to do this work, which Moss Adams is? And did you receive a clean audit opinion? And what is it done, timely and filed with the state on time? As you have to file within six months of your fiscal year end. So that was all done. Very good news there. We also have to do a number of procedures and report out on your compliance with certain Oregon state statutes. The state of Oregon has certain statutes that requires any independent audit firm that's doing work for an Oregon governmental entity has to also, as they're doing their financial statement audit, test compliance with certain state statutes. Most notably, your compliance with the Oregon Local Budget Law, as well as the state statutes regarding procurement. So we pull certain transactions. We're making sure that you're following through on what those statutes say and that there's evidence supporting that you comply with those during the year. We did not have any compliance findings or reportable internal control findings related to those items within what's called the Oregon Minimum Standards Report. That's also included in your ACFER. And then finally, we issue a report in accordance with government auditing standards. It's a separate audit report because we're doing the audit in accordance with not only corporate professional standards, but also government auditing standards because you're a governmental entity. That just really, the main difference there is it's a different reporting requirement, where if we had any deficiencies in internal controls, that we would consider what's called a material weakness or significant deficiency, kind of a higher level of severity of a lack of internal controls or checks and balances, we would note them within that report that also gets attached to your ACFER, gets reported out to the public that way. We did not have any material weaknesses noted within that report. So very good news there. We look at your internal controls and evaluate that each and every year as they relate to the financial statements and the financial reporting processes, and did not have material weaknesses. So that's what you're looking for. Go ahead and advance the slide. And I'm going to actually turn it over to David, our audit manager, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the other items that we communicated to the audit liaisons.
Thank you, Keith. Our auditing standards require us to communicate certain items with those charged with governments, which are on the slide in front of you. We communicated our planned scope of our audit and the timing during our pre-audit liaison meeting. We are pleased to announce we had no audit adjustments that came through our audit procedures. We are not aware that management had any consultation with other accountants. We had no disagreements with management, no difficulties in performing our audit. And we did have a couple of best practice recommendations. We communicated those in our audit liaison meeting back in October, as well as issued in those charged with governments letter. We did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as part of our audit that came from either internal control, testing, or as part of our substantive audit. Next slide, please. And we'd also like to recognize Tony Barnes, Brad Reynolds, and Gina Bixby for all their work they put into this audit. I took a look today at our request list, and we had 253 requests, which is, takes a huge time commitment. So huge thanks to them for facilitating the audit, providing us all those requests, and as well as recognizing Dan for facilitating the audit contract. Next slide.
Perfect. Yeah, I was just going to say that concludes our presentation on the audit results for this year's financial statement audit engagement. But happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Well, I would just say thanks to everybody for your great work. Thank you, Auditor Reddy, to you and your team and the Moss Adams team. You guys have been with us for a long time, doing a great job. Really appreciate it. And Tony, you and your team, just terrific as well. So I noticed in the letter, there was a reference to planning to apply for the certificate again this year. We, you know, every year, it seems like we're up for the certificate, which is, you know, thanks to Tony and his team for audit excellence, excuse me, financial reporting excellence. And so that'll be considered again this year. And I think the tremendous work and consistency.
Thank you, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. Thank you to the Moss Adams team and Auditor Reddy and the full City of Portland Audit Team. Really appreciate all the facilitation, all the work. Big gratitude and appreciation to the wonderful finance team here at Prosper. Courtney Cohn, Chan Se Lee, Kao Se Chow, Trevor A. Brandon, Keith Padilla, Terry Rosales, Gina Bixby, Brad Reynolds. Gina, Brad, thanks for all the daily work, as David mentioned, between May and November, just an amazing amount of work. And thanks again to the Moss Adams team for reviewing the ACFR in preparation for that's submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association and the State of Oregon. Appreciate everybody's assistance and work through the whole process.
All right then. Well, if there are no more comments, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the report? That would be to approve Resolution Number 75.
I so move.
Second.
All right. Thanks. All those in favor then? Aye?
Aye.
Great. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Again, really appreciate it. Thanks for coming today. Okay. With that, the meeting of the Audit Committee is adjourned, and we will now reconvene the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting to consider the next item on the agenda. So this is item seven, an action item authorizing a personal services contract with Commercial Residential Management Group. And we're also simultaneously going to consider item eight, which is an action item authorizing a personal services contract with City Center Parking. And Will Thier and Amber Breckenridge will present. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Will.
Yeah. Will Thier, Real Estate Manager.
Amber Breckenridge, Project Manager, too, for the real estate team.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair Cruz, Executive Director Shay Flattery-Battine. It's the first time I've tried that one. So I'm excited to be back, for starters, and excited to support the agency's mission once again. So next slide, please. So today's staff is seeking approval to enter into a pair of property management contracts. One is for a number of our commercial properties, as well as a set of vacant development parcels. And then the other is to manage the agency's eight parking assets. And these contracts will enable the team to engage with a professional property management company to assist us with the day-to-day tasks of property ownership. There's no change to the prior approved budget related to the approval of these contracts. So the budget's already accounting for these contracts. Also of note, both contracts are with longtime vendors, who we've had relationships with for many years. They have a high degree of familiarity with both the properties, as well as our internal processes here. Next slide, please. The two board actions here align with both the Advanced Portland Plan, as well as the agency's Financial Sustainability Plan. In terms of the Advanced Portland Plan, the ongoing management of these properties supports local businesses and provides increased contracting opportunities for both contractors and consultants on properties that we develop. And then the parking assets specifically, which are primarily located in the Central City area, those support both the health, growth, and recovery of our central commercial business districts. Finally, both contracts are important mechanisms for pursuing the agency's goals for optimizing non-TIF resources over the near and medium term. Next slide, please. Okay. Before we dive into the contract specifics themselves, I'd like to just take a minute to review the priorities of the real estate team and my intended leadership approach to managing Prosper Portland's portfolio. And then Amber will dive in and review some of the salient features of the portfolio itself. In terms of team focus, we're going to continue to prioritize supporting community goals, typically through the application of TIF-funded resources via the area action plans. But in both the case of TIF-based and non-TIF-based resource investment, the team will strive to execute Prosper's Financial Sustainability Plan by optimizing the financial performance of the assets themselves. And then, as always, we will continue to ensure that the expenditure of those investments of public funds within the real estate sphere are done in transparent and ethical manner, befitting of a public agency that's ultimately accountable to the taxpayer. Next slide, please. In terms of the portfolio management approach, as the team moves forward in pursuing the goals of both the Advanced Portland and Financial Sustainability Plans, I plan to focus the team on following areas when managing the real estate portfolio. Our first step will be to clarify and align the agency's existing real estate policies. Those are the must-dos and the shall-nots that will govern how staff will approach the real estate-related activities. I'll be bringing those proposed changes back to the board later this year. Next, we'll update and refine the asset and portfolio strategy, which will inform the what that staff will focus on in terms of buy, sell, and hold decisions for our assets. From there, we'll be prioritizing those projects and initiatives that we believe will deliver the greatest impact, both with regard to achieving community goals, as well as delivering on the agency's financial plan. And then finally, as we're just getting started on the six new TIF districts, leveraging our local and regional relationships, ongoing performance measurement, and best practice risk management techniques will all be critical ingredients in generating positive outcomes for all the stakeholders that are involved in our work. So if any board members would like any additional details about any of those initiatives and focus areas, I'd welcome your input as we go forward in all this. All right. So now I'll turn it over to Amber to provide a review of the portfolio and dive into the details of the two contracts.
Chair, Commissioners, Executive Director. I've had the pleasure of being in the real estate team for 17 years, so I just wanted to quickly run through our portfolio here. We have a variety of assets, from commercial spaces in shopping centers where we master lease them, commercial spaces that we own via HOA, and mixed-use residential areas. We own a train station. We own a hotel. The train station has office in it. We own vacant acres out in Airport Way, and we manage traffic islands. So it varies greatly, our portfolio, so lots to do, lots to think about. So we move forward here. Next slide, please. Managing properties always comes with expenses. So we provided a quick first quarter fiscal year 24-25 snapshot of our expenses on all of our properties here. You can see that security and operating expenses and insurance and taxes are quite high. Much like other property owners since 2020, security has increased significantly in order to ensure that our properties remain safe for the public that uses them. And operating expenses, along with that, are staff on site, specifically at the hotel, at the OCC garage, which has valet, and an attendant at the Station Place Garage. Insurance, everyone knows insurance has gone up quite a bit, so that has added significantly to our budget as well. Go ahead, next slide, please. As previously mentioned, we're here to get authorization for two contracts. And I'll start with CRMG, which is Commercial Real Estate Management Group. Both of these contracts were put out as part of a public solicitation via our procurement process, a request for proposals. While, let's see, they were also put on Bid Locker, DJC. They were in Plan Center Northwest, and also the Seattle DJC picked those up as well. For the property management, we only received one proposal, even though on Bid Locker alone, it was viewed over 1,000 times, and the documents were downloaded 70 times. So quite a few people looked at this request for proposals. Given the vast array of properties, I assume that there weren't very many property management companies that were interested in taking that on, since we only got one respondent. That respondent is CRMG. We've worked with them for many, many years. They're aware of our portfolio and our practices, as Will said. And through the contract, we expect to work with them to increase rents and lower expenses as we figure out what we're going to do with our portfolio in the future years. Next slide, please. Specifically for this contract, it will be a five-year term. We'll have the option to extend as needed annually. The initial five-year management fee is estimated to be about $189,000, $190,000. Below is a quick sort of breakout of what we expect those to be. Again, our goal is to reduce the expenses that we have on our properties, especially as TIF districts expire and we're moving to different funding sources. As Will also said, all of the costs for the five years is approved in the fiscal year 24-25 adopted budget and the forecast years through fiscal year 29-30. Next slide. For the parking management, we had five respondents to our RFP. Those five respondents were evaluated independently by various staff in the agency, who were not communicated with each other, so it was based solely on their review of the proposals themselves. And City Center Parking was selected by everybody as their top proposer. They have been with us as well for many years. Many, many years ago, we had a split portfolio, and we decided to stick with one for ease of costs and management for myself. So we're looking forward to working with them, both CRMG and City Center Parking, our current incumbents for both of these contracts. Next slide, please. This contract will also be five years. Again, the five-year management fee, we're looking at $141,000. They did work with us on their pricing, so that was much thanks to them. We will continue to work with them as parking comes back into the Central City to figure out ways to reduce costs, streamline a little bit, and give incentives for people who are parking downtown, coming back to work, as we all are starting to do. And I think with that, is questions next, if anybody has any.
I'm excited for your work, Will. That's going to be great to see. So looking forward to that, and would love to learn more. And thank you for your work on this. I think it's really important. I am curious, and this is not intended at all as a criticism of CRMG or our requirements, but I think it's a data point to see that we only had one proposal for the property management piece. It might be interesting to get feedback from property managers who are considering the RFP to see why they didn't propose. I know the portfolio is really diverse. Our company actually has a similarly diverse portfolio of vacant land and industrial and office and residential and parking. So we have discovered that there are companies out there who will manage all those things. I'm curious why some of the others didn't propose. And then also, another piece for consideration is whether it might be worth dividing up the portfolio amongst two property managers. I know it creates a little bit more work to coordinate. On the flip side, it might provide some more optimal service that's specific to those asset types. So I know both of you have a lot of work cut out, and I'm sure it's potentially on the docket already for consideration for the next round. But it might just be good information to help us make guided decisions in the future.
Thank you. We have actually had separate contracts in past years, separating out the commercial and some of the properties that maybe don't make quite as much money. And I think it was the last contract that we had that we went through RFP, we gave the option to select the properties that they wanted. And the other respondents really only picked the commercial pieces, and CRMG picked all of it. So that's why we went with them in order to sort of streamline that. So that's why we went with them, in order to sort of streamline that. So, but yeah, there's a good question there about why no one else responded.
We'll definitely go back to everybody that went through Bid Locker and downloaded the documents, and we'll reach out to them and see if we can get some feedback.
Thank you.
No? Commissioner Stottermeyer Wesley, any comments? Okay. I just said one-
None for me, great job. None for me, I'm sorry, great job.
I just had one question. I saw that it appeared as though there's some other parcels that aren't really covered by either of these contracts. Are those the parking, or excuse me, the traffic island oddball pieces? Is that primarily what those parcels are?
No, actually, the properties that aren't managed by either of them currently are Union Station, which is managed by myself and a very nice maintenance man that we've contracted with. And the post office is also managed by myself. There are some other properties that are, have leases where we're not really responsible for anything. The tenant is, so those are ones that don't make sense to transfer over to a property management company. Or pieces of property that are managed by maybe parks that we still own.
Thank you. Thanks very much to both of you. This is great. Thanks, Will, for taking on this role. So, great. Okay. Well, we need to vote on these two resolutions separately. So would somebody like to make a motion on Resolution Number 7592, which is the Commercial and Residential Management Group?
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
unanimously. And then, I would appreciate a motion on Resolution Number 7593, which is for the City Center Parking Contract.
I so move.
Second.
Commissioner Wesley beat me to it. It's her second.
Beat you. All right. Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously, too. So thanks very much. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. So now we have one more adjournment and convention, if you will, reconvening. The meeting of the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners is now adjourned, and we will convene a meeting of the Portland Community Investment Fund Governing Board. This is to deal with action item number nine, which is appointing Shay Flaherty-Battine as president of the corporation. So Casey.
Thank you, Chair Cruz. Directors and prospective incoming president, Flaherty-Battine. Thank you for your time. Last year, you'll all recall that we met once as this body to pass some bylaws amendments and to confirm the identities of yourselves as the directors of the corporation, the nonprofit corporation established in 2016 in connection with efforts to pursue new market tax credits projects. This entity is not active in any of those projects, as you know, but is kept in place for the possibility of opportunities presenting themselves in the medium term due to the level of effort and inconvenience that went into setting it up. We wouldn't want to repeat that to do it again. So keeping this entity in existence does involve these procedural formalities. We've tried to lighten them as much as possible, but something as important as the appointment of a president with the extent of the powers that they exercise under the bylaws is something that's best handled by yourselves, as opposed to out of the public eye or otherwise. Kimberly Branham, our very capable and long-serving executive director, of course, left. She was president of PCIF. So vacancy has arisen in that position, and only yourselves can appoint a successor. And we think that the best candidate is sitting with all of us up here at the dais, the interim executive director, who is very capably serving a much more difficult role than this one. So that is the entirety of the item, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions for, any questions on this one? Nope. All right, then. Well, would someone like to make a motion to approve PCIF number, excuse me, PCIF-7, Resolution Number 7, which is appointing Shay Flaherty-Battine as president of the corporation?
I make a motion to approve?
So second.
Thanks so much. All right. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Congratulations, Shay.
Speech.
Thank you, Casey. Appreciate it. All right. Well, I don't know, I don't think I have to reconvene our board meeting. There are no more, there are no more agenda items unless anybody has anything else they'd like to discuss. That ends our meeting for today. Thank you.
This was such an awesome meeting. Thank you.
You missed out.
Efficiency, efficiency.
Have a great weekend, you all. Bye-bye.
Bye.